Good evening. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Joe Cobza.
Thanks Shannon. Just before we begin the meeting, I'd just like to take a minute right now and ask that we all take a moment of silence for Juliana Gonzalez. Juliana was a senior at Masick High School. She was new to our community this year. Unfortunately, she suffered from a medical condition on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and passed away last week. So if we could just please take a quick moment. Thank you very much. Again, I just ask that we keep Juliana's family in our thoughts at this time. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to nominate a new Chair of the Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
You'd like to make a motion to nominate David Ferris?
Jeff Falcino, motion for David.
Second.
Second. Christine Casella. Any discussion? Alan?
I just wanted to make a, you know, general statement that I'm hoping that Dave will follow in the footsteps of Donna Lane. Donna treated all members fairly, and she was always willing to listen. Donna did not take orders from party leadership. Instead, she always acted in the best interest of the children. We all benefit from public education, and we all have an ownership stake. Party politics makes progress difficult. Kids don't care about party affiliation. Most parents don't care about party affiliation. They care more about maintaining the quality of the school system. Our organization CAEB, their training teaches us that as members of the Board of Ed, we're not here to be a proxy for party leadership. I hope all our members, both parties, will stay out of the echo chamber of their political organization. Regardless of political affiliation, public education matters. If our young people are our greatest resource, then public education is our greatest investment. It represents our ideals of equity and opportunity, and that's why the work of the Board of Education is so important.
Thanks Alan. Any other discussion? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll just ask that all those in favor of David Ferris as the Board of Education Chair, please signify by raising your hand. And Justin, do you want to signify by saying aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye. Did you get all that Diane? Thank you very much. We have a new Chair of the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you Shannon. Can I use your laptop?
No.
Alan, thank you for those words. Appreciate it. Thank you all. Moving right along, do I have a motion for nomination for Vice Chair? Christine?
I would like to nominate Shannon Riley.
Okay, I have a motion from Christine to nominate Shannon Riley for Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second?
Okay, Dennis. Any discussion? Are there any other motions for Vice Chair? Jerry?
I'd like to nominate Alan Begliavilla.
I have a motion from Jerry to nominate Alan for Vice Chair. Do I have a second? Nick, there's a second. Do I have any other motions on the floor? Hearing no more motions, is there any discussion? Jerry?
Yeah, you know, there are many reasons why I nominated Alan. Of course, as many of you know, he's our oldest serving active member. Alan also has a tremendous amount of experience working in the field of education for the city of Norwalk. With these, Alan brings a unique wealth of knowledge, information, and expertise. If we really want to strive to be that team that we say we want to be, I ask you to consider voting for Alan. Thank you.
Thank you Jerry. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of Alan for Vice Chair, please raise your hand. There's four.
Wait, for who?
Alan.
Oh, Alan, sorry.
Okay, sorry, one more time.
I got it.
All those in favor of Alan for Vice Chair, please raise your hand. There's three. All those against? Jeff, are you yea or nay?
You mean Justin?
Justin?
Nay.
Okay, that motion did not pass. All those in favor of Shannon for Vice Chair, please raise your hand. Justin, are you yea or nay? For Shannon?
Yea.
Diane, you have that? Okay, congratulations Shannon, you're Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, ladies and gentlemen, I'll take any motions for Secretary. Do I have any motions for Secretary for the Board? Jeff?
I'd like to make a motion, Christine Casella for Secretary.
Okay, Jeff made a motion for Christine Casella for Secretary of the Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dennis, seconds. Do I have any other motions? Nick?
I'd like to nominate Jerry for Secretary.
Nick? Made a motion for Jerry as Secretary. Do I have a second? Alan seconds the motion. Do I have any other motions? Hearing no other motions. All those in favor of Jeri-
Mr.-
Sorry, go ahead Nick. Sorry, any discussion?
That's okay. Just very briefly, I just want to kind of pick up on what Jerry said. You know, I think over the last couple of years, our Board has been through a lot. I think that this election of Secretary is an opportunity for all of us to kind of put our money where our mouth is. I think that if we want to, you know, really kick things off by being a team, if we want to, you know, show the community that we could lead in a very bipartisan way, I think it's important that we have members of both parties in Board leadership. And I think Jerry would do the job very well. He's been a, he is a 35-year teacher of Monroe. He's been on the Board now for, I believe, six years. And so I think this is an opportunity for us to make a statement. Thank you.
Thank you Nick. Any other discussion for Secretary? Hearing none. All those in favor of Jerry Stevens for Secretary, please raise your hand. One, two, three. All those against?
Nay.
Thank you Justin. All those in favor of Christine for Secretary, please raise your hand.
Jerry.
Thank you Justin. All those against Christine as Secretary, please raise your hand. Three, got it Diane? Christine, you're the Secretary. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, next on the agenda is the Report of the Chairman. I want to thank you. I want to welcome our new members, Dennis and Justin, to the Board. And also, I want to, I want to welcome our newest Panther, Principal Swenson, had a baby boy this week, so congratulations to him as well. One thing I do want to mention also is to review our meeting dates to make sure that everyone has this on our schedules. We are scheduled for this Wednesday, the 8th, at 6:30. At 6:30. And I want to check with everybody too. We're supposed to get some light snow. I think that's all it's going to be, but in the event that Joe has to let out early or cancel school, is everyone free on the following Wednesday, the 15th? Just so we can set a date? Is that good for everybody? As a contingency? Christine, no? Nick, no? Okay. Okay, you got them up there? Thank you. Okay, so Christine and Nick are a no. Is everybody else okay? Justin, are you available on the 15th?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so is there another date where everybody can make it? It is budget, so I prefer to have everybody here. Joe, what if we went to Thursday?
No.
That's an idea Christine, yeah? How's Thursday, the 9th for everybody? Just move it one day over?
Yep.
You're good?
I am unavailable this Thursday.
Okay.
Hey Dave?
This Thursday, it's the 16th. Were you talking the 9th or the 16th?
9th or the 16th, but we're originally talking the 9th.
9th or the 16th, it's fine for me.
Yep. I was just going to say, I don't know if it's still allowable, but if we do let out or have no school on Wednesday, we could Zoom Wednesday night to keep the date. Just, I don't know.
Can we still meet like that, even though we don't do?
We would just have to, we'd just have to notice. Yeah, I think it's just got to be noticed.
Right. Right?
If it's too much, I just, I don't know, I'm just saying to keep the dates.
No, that's, that's an idea. Yeah. Okay. Why don't we do that then?
Yeah.
We'll notice it in the event that you have to cancel?
Yep.
Thanks Nick.
So we're staying with the 8th and the 16th?
We'll stay with the 8th, we'll Zoom it if we get a snow event, and that's for 6:30. And then our next meeting would be the 13th at 6:30, following Monday. And then the following Monday, this December 20th, is our regular meeting at 7:30. So I just want to make sure that we have all those. So ladies and gentlemen, what we're doing is we're just plugging in some gaps from Donna and George leaving. So Joe, on Board of Finance Liaison, the paper said vacant, but that's Nick. Right Nick? Yep. So I just wanted to make sure that we had that. I am coming off of Pension Committee, so Dennis, that's okay if you take Pension, plug into there. Another opening on Finance Committee. Justin, are you okay with going to Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we got rid of Finance Committee.
They meet rarely, as needed.
Okay.
Because a lot of it is repetitive to the regular meeting.
Yes.
Right. Policy Committee, Christine, are you okay with Policy Committee?
Mm-hmm.
And also with Policy Committee, Shannon as Vice Chair, you will Chair Policy Committee? Okay. And then Dennis on Pension. We still have the opening for CES. Those meetings are at 3 o'clock, that's why it's tough to get somebody there, but if anyone can do that. The other idea was their meeting virtually.
Yeah, I think they have hybrid meetings right now.
So if any one of us could Zoom in, that would be great. Just let us know, we'll get you that information. Wouldn't be an issue if we all jumped in when we could. I think that would help.
Dave?
Yes Nick?
Could you just send out the meeting dates for CES?
Sure.
Like when they meet, maybe to the whole Board, just so we see what the calendar looks like?
All the giveties would be great, actually. Meeting dates for all.
Okay.
Okay. So that's all I have. I'd like to move on to the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Jerry's making a motion. Do I have a second? Nick, thank you very much. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Joe, do you have any? Any further discussion on Consent Agenda? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll oblige me for a minute, Robert's Rules of Order allows that the Chair can call for any objections for routine votes like this. If there's no objections, the motion would pass unanimously. Is everybody okay with that? And then I think if we get to votes where there's more of an issue, we can do a roll call vote. So, okay, is there any, any discussion on Consent Agenda? Any objections? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our reports of our Committees and Liaison. And patiently waiting for all this are our student reps, so I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone is having a marvelous Monday. The National Honor Society held their induction ceremony last month in the Masick Auditorium, and juniors and seniors who showed scholarship, leadership, and service were selected to be part of this highly esteemed organization. The B Positive Club held a successful fundraiser at Terra Cafe last month as well, and all proceeds went to the Andrew Madonna Foundation to support families of children with cancer in need of financial assistance. Winter tryouts for our winter sports happened in the previous weeks, and quarter two progress reports came out last Friday, December 3rd, marking the halfway point of our quarter. Despite the varsity football team season ending this past Sunday with a sad loss to Meriden, they presented a great season with lots of key victories, including winning against our rival Newtown in the Thanksgiving game for the first time in 10 years, and having a 28-point comeback in one of them past home games. Overall, football and all of the other fall sports that have come to an end played great and should be proud of themselves. Now looking into the winter season, boys hockey kicked off the cold months with a win against Sutherlandton, 5 to 4 on Saturday. Their first game brings big hopes for all of the other sports that will start competing soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our student reps? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else have any?
Just congratulations to the Masick Football Team, that was, that was awesome.
They did, they did a great job. What a good season, yeah.
Yeah.
They did. Anyone else have any Committee or Liaison reports? Nick?
Just to notify the Board, the November Board of Finance meeting was canceled. The next meeting is scheduled for December 16th, and I think it'll be, again, an important meeting for the Board to be aware of, because I'm hoping at that meeting we'll have more discussions around the ESSER funding and the covering of funds for the operating expenses in this year's budget.
Yeah. Okay, and then I have Safety Committee met on November 18th. All schools reported in, drills and concerns, fairly routine, and any of those concerns are being addressed by the Administration. Jack, unless you have anything to add?
No, that's it.
That was pretty much it. Okay. So we will move on to Public Participation. Joe, do we have anyone signed up?
Nobody was signed up ahead of time.
Okay, anyone here for Public Participation? You're letting me off easy, my first meeting. Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to the Report of the Superintendent.
Great, and I'm going to start by just asking, Jeff, Darlene is not with us tonight and Wednesday night, so Jeff, you can give our special ed update.
Joe, do we need to move?
No.
Hi, everyone.
Hi Jeff.
So just a quick update tonight on our enrollment. In November, we had three kids who registered in District. We had six students who were withdrawn, dismissed, or moved. So out of those six, we had four students that were dismissed from services and two that actually moved out of town. And then we had four students that were eligible for services, so that brings us to 509 students in the month of November. Just like to note that we're at 40 students at this point who have registered since July, have come into District at this point. So if you take a look at our, anybody have any questions about enrollment?
What about the preschool?
So preschool, we're okay at the moment, but we have about 14 students that we're hearing that are possibly going to be enrolling after January, that are going to be coming and may be eligible for services.
How many moving up to kindergarten for next year?
Um, I think we're in, the number's around 20-ish. I have to take a look. I can get back to you on that one. Any questions about enrollment? So if you take a look at our finances, right now, our outside agency line continues to go up a bit. It's up from last month, and we are continuing to look at that, but that all is student-specific due to different programming that has been happening over the, over the past month. But overall, our budget is remaining steady at the moment, and everything that we know of right now is encumbered, so that's where we are right now. And Darlene and I will be presenting our budget on the 13th. Questions? No?
No, nothing for Jeff?
Thanks Jeff.
Okay. Thank you.
Just really quickly, wanted to touch on the kindergarten enrollment difference. I met with the elementary principals, Jack, Sheila, Darlene. You know, as we discussed last year, we've been trying to balance out our section sizes across the elementary schools. I met with Alan and Christine, I think it was late spring, early summer last year. We designated some neighborhoods to explore, possibly moving incoming kindergarten students without older siblings to other schools. Because we're trying to capture a population that's not in school yet, there's a lot of logistics that goes into just getting the data that we need. So one of the things we need to start with is getting out a press release, because you can't send out a school messenger if they don't have kids in the, in the school. So we're going to start by sending out a press release and follow that up with a canvassing letter in those neighborhoods that we identified and, you know, generally speaking, we're looking at the areas in Whitney Farms where Hillside and North Hillside and kind of the adjacent streets there meet, and then the streets around Doris Drive, Colours Farm, Spring Hill Road. The canvassing letter would ask qualifying families to notify us if they plan to register their oldest child in kindergarten in 22, 23, or 24. So we also kind of try to get a historical look of, to see what's in those, what's in those neighborhoods. One thing, you're going to see this, you're going to see a lot of, a lot of charts tonight, and this one will probably show up a few times, but just a little, shrink down a little bit. I think that's probably gets enough. These are the three elementary schools. This is their, their population as of now. I just want to, just be as, you know, forthright as possible with where we're going with all this. Is really, we're getting really challenged in terms of where they, where students could go, because if you look at, last year, we kind of identified Monroe, although it has the better class sizes, there's only three sections, so really quickly, we could be creating a problem if we moved too many kids and we don't realize what's going on on Dallas Street. So we're actually kind of very close here, now 18 students, and I'm looking at just kindergarten. This is, this would be if we projected a year from now, and this is what we had. We don't know yet what we're going to have, and I think that's the important piece that I just want to make clear with us here and with the community, that there's no decisions have been made yet. We have to get, we have to get data first to see where we are. But right now, if it was this year, it would be tricky, because you have 18, 19, and 21, it's a little bit bigger, but a lot more sections over here. So, you know, to make this, you know, 20, if you put six kids, you have to put six kids from, from here to here. So it is, it got a little bit closer. Last year, I think it was like, I think it was like 16 in kindergarten at the time we were, we were looking at this. So I just wanted to, you know, just have people, just take a look at that. We are going to be sending these letters out. I know it's going to cause a little, you know, a little concern for some people, but again, I think what's important is that, you know, families understand, especially families that have kids in school already, that we're targeting kids that are, will be starting kindergarten, and they're the oldest in their, in their family. Or if they have a fifth grader going into sixth grade, they'll be, we do not want to, we do not want to split up families by any stretch. And again, it's just so important that everybody understands that. There's no decisions have been made yet. We need to get some data first, so it's, there's a lot of, a lot of work to go into it. So we have a press release that's going to go out, then we have to send a mailer out, like I said, to those neighborhoods. So I'll use, my street's a good example. We have to send, it's one of the streets off of, off of Spring Hill Road. We'll send a mailer out to everyone. My mother lives next door, she's going to get it as well. So we have to go, we have to go through everyone to find out, you know, who has incoming kindergartners coming in. So we'll see what we get from, from that data, and then hopefully, you know, start getting kids enrolled soon after, because we want to open it up earlier this year. Does the drop of two students, is that reflected in this? Excuse me? The two dropped students that moved out of town? Is that in this? What's this up to date to? 12-6? This is actually up to date to 11-29. Okay, so that may not be included, right? Two dropped students? Two students moving out of town? Oh! That, that should probably be included, because, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah. And actually, I'll be honest with you, what's, what's not included, and Ashley will probably talk about it later, we have four kids enroll, start school today at Stepney, and we have two that are going to start school at Stepney tomorrow. So it doesn't include this. I captured attendance, just so everybody understands, attendance is incredibly hard, enrollment is incredibly hard to capture, because you have to capture it at a time. That's why I try to stick to October 1st, because that's the state capture date, the last day of school, that's the state recorded date, and then I always, around budget season, like to use the budget. Budget as well.
And Jeff, we talked about opening up enrollment for kindergarten?
Early.
Right now?
Yes.
Are you going to do a press release with that as well, with that?
Yeah, what we're trying to do is get this out first, because the tricky thing is, is when they, we're going to have to try to, we're trying to capture who those families are that have those kids, because I'm not sure where they're going to register for school. They're going to want to, they're going to want to register for a school, and we don't want to say, register for this school, and they're thinking they'll go to that school, and then it, then it changes.
Gotcha.
So that's why we're trying to capture who they are first, and then maybe even we can create a multi-school or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, and undefined, but yeah, that's, that's the plan. But it's, it's tricky. That's why we have to kind of, you know, canvas it with the, with the press release, get, get information out to probably all the daycares in the area as well, which is normally what we do for kindergarten registration as it is. And then follow it up with that other letter, that just says, hey, let us know. That letter will direct them to the website, where they'll fill out a form saying, as I have a kid, you know, my oldest kid will be going in in 22, or 23, or 24.
Any other questions for the Superintendent? Nick?
Um, Joe, a couple, last week maybe, there was an article in the Connecticut Post about Stratford. I don't know if you saw it, but they sent out an email, this is the Board, the school district, sent out an email to parents, basically saying, get ready in case you have to go remote. And right when that hit, I got like two or three direct messages saying, what, what are you guys doing? And then it was like the next day that it said like, the positivity rate statewide was 6.5, everyone's freaking out about, you know, Omicron and how it's coming, so I just, I guess just, just generally, how is contact tracing going? You know, no one's, across the state has gone remote, but I, I just feel like there's a lot of anxiety around what's going on with positivity and Omicron and, and schools and what we all went through last year.
Yeah. Contact tracing is going, and I have to, I saw Kelly had her mask out low enough to smirk. You know, our staff is working incredibly hard, especially, you know, at the elementary level, where they're the only show in town, so it's them and the nurses. There's, there's been quite a significant amount of contact tracing, you know, with the, with the recent uptick in, in spike in cases. So, you know, that's where we are right now. The, we, I spoke directly to the Deputy Epidemiologist in the State Department of Public Health a couple of weeks ago. We were having, we had a pretty significant spike at Stepney Elementary, and pretty much what they were saying then, and we sit down, I'll be on tomorrow at 8 o'clock for like the 65th meeting in a row with the Department of Public Health, but what they were saying at that point was, you know, is provided, you know, it doesn't become an operational issue, they're, they're strongly encouraging districts to stay, to stay in person. So.
That was just one of, I knew the answer, I just wanted to ask the question, because I just-
It was from an operational standpoint.
It just, you know, I, these, these different articles are being written. Stanford did something similar, and I just, I think it's just the history of what we went through. People are anxious about it, so.
And we're in, you know, we're in a slightly different spot than we were a year ago. I think of, you know, a year ago, Jackie Hall went out a little bit before Thanksgiving, but it was, we just ran out of staff because people weren't vaccinated yet, so they, you know, if they were contact traced, they were out, and it just, it just got to be too much. We couldn't, couldn't cover classes. And that happened at a few of the schools.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else for the Superintendent?
That's it for my report.
Okay, so then we will move on to our presentations, the Superintendent's proposed budget. Shannon, if you want to go that way, I'll go this way. Joe, go.
First, I just want to start by thanking all the folks sitting back there, and Jack, and especially Ron, Ron and I were in on a couple of different weekends, trying to get some work done, at least for me anyway. Probably not as happy for Ron, but just the weekend provides a little bit of uninterrupted time, we can sit and just really digest the budget. But, you know, this work, it's really amazing how early this starts, and I never really appreciated it until, really, this year. And I never really appreciated it until really this year. You know, we start the budget process. Now, I say we, the principals and the department heads and whatnot, start the budget process at the second week of October. For all intents and purposes, school starts October 1st. So we're like one tenth of the school year into it and we're trying to forecast out what we're going to, what we're going to do. So we start, we know we've always started very early in Monroe, but I, I really appreciate the work that this team put in, meeting with their staff, meeting with their assistant principals, meeting with their instructional leaders, meeting with all the key stakeholders to try to put this, uh, to put this budget together. So definitely thank them. Our, our guide every year is really two things. Number one is our mission, which is to create a student-centered environment to maximize our students in every area that we can. And if they're doing that, we want them, we want this to be our guide as well. We started to talk about the vision of the graduate and, you know, if you remember, the vision of the graduate are those transferable skills, knowledge and disposition that we want our kids to have when they graduate. So on top of knowledge, which would be curriculum instruction, which is really the basis, content is the basis for all this. What are those things we really want? What's, what is it that's important for our kids to graduate with? Critical thinking and problem solving, communication, empathy and compassion, social emotional readiness and curiosity. These need to be our guide and this will continue to be our guide as we look to, you know, formulate in our budgets now and in the future. In order to meet that vision and mission, we need a budget that provides to meet the mandates that we have in the state. Uh, we need a budget that's going to monitor addressed class size. I'll be talking a lot about that tonight. It's a big part of, it's a big part of tonight's conversation. We've got to increase enrollment. Obviously we want to be able to provide a rich curriculum for our students. We want technology and most importantly, or equally importantly, but something that's also going to be really important to talk about tonight is enhanced programming that meets the changing needs of our students. And we have some really significant changing needs in our student population. Before, this is a shameless plug, but before I get into the budget, I just want us to reflect for a second on a lot of things that we have to be proud of in Monroe. And we do have a lot of great things historically currently that we should be proud of. We have schools that have been recognized by a number of different organizations. We have awesome curricular offerings. We have fantastic and vibrant extracurricular offerings, whether it's athletics, robotics, unified sports, our, our, our fine and performing arts. This is actually, I wasn't sure, it looked like a burning, it looked like Monroe Elementary burned it down in 1983 when I drove up the street. But it's actually, uh, that was the legend of Sleepy Hollow this year that was going outside. But we have a lot, we have a lot to be proud of and I, I think we need to remember that, especially this time of year.
Joe, can you talk a little bit about the U.S. News World Report?
Yeah. I think we had the Monroe Elementary this year was recognized as, what, Cal, was it three or five?
Six.
Six.
Six. The sixth best, the sixth best, um, the sixth best elementary school in the state through U.S. News World Report. And Font Hollow and Stepney weren't, weren't very far behind. And we need to celebrate those things. Thank you for bringing that up. I'll hit you with the, the number right quick. The, the ad books are ready. Over the weekend, you already saw this, this budget, $64,836,803. It represents a 5.39% increase over the, uh, over last year's budget. The key drivers, it's really in salaries and benefits, but it's a product of, and again, I'm going to keep going back to this, student enrollment and student mental health and addressing the needs of our kids and our schools. Those are really the two key drivers. This is a human resources business. We're going to talk about increases to staffing this year. So any increases to staffing is obviously going to impact those two areas. Those are clearly the two biggest drivers of our, of our budget. They make up a little bit more than the increase that we have a 5.39% increase, but we do have some reductions in other areas that got us down to the 5.39%. One of the most significant is in special education. Um, public tuition is down significantly. I think close to $700,000. These are the two areas we're talking about. If we're talking about staffing, these are going to be the two areas that are the key drivers to the budget. The assumption is we have the first two go together. We want to be able to address the sustained increase in enrollment that we've experienced over the past two levels, uh, I'm sorry, the last two years that has really put pressure at our, at the elementary level. When you see that in a few minutes, when we look at with all the new students that we have coming in, where they are really sexually located is at the elementary school. We do have stability in special education costs. That's a credit to Darlene and Jen. It's also, it's also a credit to the help of the town and the Board of Finance for setting up the Special Education Reserve Fund where we have about a million dollar contingency right now. So we, we feel comfortable with special education costs. This budget assumes an 8% increase in health insurance premiums. Once again, our, our process starts so early. We won't know these numbers probably until April. So as is, one of the things I've learned over the years is the budget's not a sprint. It's a, it's a marathon. And we're going to get a lot of information over the next few, over the next few months that'll, uh, that we can change for. So we did budget on the higher end of what the state has, the state partnership plan has indicated could be an increase for next year. Last year, we began to fund our repair and maintenance accounts at a sufficient level. Those were two areas that were hit pretty hard in the years when we had some budget difficulties. So we know that, you know, repair and maintenance, if we take care of them now, it prevents some, you know, much more significant costs down the road. You'll notice throughout the budget in some areas that there aren't increases in some areas or they're very negligible, like in transportation or whatnot. Just understand right now, we have contingencies built in for fuel, transportation and some of our collective bargaining agreements. Once again, we're in the process of negotiating with the bus company. We're still in contract negotiations with a couple of groups. So we have contingencies built in, but then you won't see them in those lines. So those, those contingencies are separate in the budget. And the last thing that has made this very difficult now for a couple of years in a row is it's really hard to identify spending trends based on actuals from the last two years. 19 and 20, we went out in March. 2021 was, we were in, we were out, we were hybrid, you know, we had all kinds of, uh, all kinds of, um, you know, different scenarios going on. So it's really difficult to come up with a trend of spending. So and it's again, it's a credit to the principals and everything else to come up with a budget without those trends. We've seen this slide before. This is where we are currently right now. Our increase, we're asking for 5.39%. We did have a pretty significant increase last year of 5.16%. Uh, I've always talked about this slide. I'm sure people are kind of sick of hearing me say it, but when I look at, this is, this is one of the key slides. Look at our student population right now. And this, by the way, you'll see a couple of different enrollment charts tonight and the numbers don't always add up to 3366. I'm moving to be higher because this chart, what I'm comparing here is our increase with our student enrollment that are in our schools with our staff that are assigned to those students. So this particular chart here will not include outplaced students. Okay. So if we outplace a student, which we, we have to cover the expenses for that, but we're not necessarily covering them with FTE. But if you look at our enrollment as of right now, 3366 and our FTE at 26715. And this includes some staff that we added this year, either allocated through SER 2 or earmarked through ARPESR or ARPEA, the special ed grant. We're at 267.15 staff. You go back to 3366, you'd have to go all the way back to between 1314 and 1415 to get to that student population. And like I said, you're looking at a difference of about 10 to 13 more teachers at that time.
Hey, Joe.
Yes.
The certified staff.
Yes.
For 2122, does that include the recent ones that we just hired on the SER funds?
Yes. It, it includes, yes, it includes the staff that we have right now that are in for SER 2 and for ARPESR. There, I do not believe it includes some, no, it does not include, we have a few in the ARPEA because they haven't started yet. They'll be starting, they'll be starting shortly. If you look at our 10-year average, even with last year's pretty significant increase, look at about a 1.81% increase. If you added this year and animated the 11-year average, you're looking at about 2.14 over the last 11 years. All right. I've shown different versions of this chart over the past few months. So it should look somewhat familiar to you. And it reads right to left. It reads right to left. So what you'll see here is last year when we were sitting here on November, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I always pick the Monday before this meeting because I don't want to be trying to pull this, this data together this morning. So this was the Monday before the, uh, last year's budget presentation. This was our enrollment. This is the last day of school last year, which is one of those state reported times. And then this is our enrollment as of last Monday. So if you look at this, you're going to see the increase in enrollment that we're, that we're experiencing from when we were budgeting last year. We have 42 more kids at Monroe Elementary than, uh, than, than we did then. Okay. We have 42 kids more now. The big bulk of that, like I've talked about before, is in our pre-K program. We have 39 at this point last year. Right now we have 64 and like Jen said, I think it's close to 13, 12 to 14 kids that are in the Hopper that, that we know that are going to be three years old soon. So a really big number. We have, we have this as sections, uh, three sections right now. We're actually adding as part of this ARPEA. Just, we need to. I mean, it's just, those numbers are crazy. If we add 12 to 14 kids, we'll be adding a fourth section here, uh, probably right after the new year. So that's the big story at Monroe. That's a big story at Monroe Al. Font Hollow, the big story as we know was kindergarten. If you look at where we were last year at budget time, we have 72 students more than, uh, we have 72 more students now than we did last year. And the big jump last year, from last year to this year, within kindergarten, 84 in kindergarten last year, 125 in kindergarten this year, increased two sections di- this year from 28 to 30. And we're going to talk about some additional increases that we'll have for, for next year in terms of FTE at Font Hollow. Stepney Elementary, we went from 20 sections last year to 22 sections this year, increase of 30, 32 students at, at Stepney. Jackie Hollow and Massey stayed relatively, relatively flat. And, you know, the problem, not the problem of that, but those are the two areas, Jackie Hollow and Massey are the areas where it's easier to absorb kids. At the elementary level, you're adding sections. You're adding, you're adding students into classes. You have to add an additional section. Jackie Hollow and Massey, you have multiple sections of an English class and a social studies class and you can work a little bit better. But if you look at our numbers from last year to this year, we added nine students to Jackie Hollow and 13 students to Massey. Here's the big number, folks. We've added 168 students to our district from last budget, when we were sitting here last year to right now. 13 and nine at the secondary level is 22. 146 of our 168 students are at the elementary level.
How many?
146 of the 168 are at the elementary level.
Really 152 because you got four from today and two from tomorrow.
146 of the 168.
It's by November 29.
It's by the hour, right?
Yeah. You can drive yourself nuts with enrollment doing that. But you're absolutely right. Yeah. We're going to have four today and when we wake up tomorrow, it'll be, uh, six more than this.
Right. Cause does that 146 include the four from?
Does not include those. This is from last Monday.
Right.
Those students just started today.
So like that'll be 150 out of 172 by tomorrow, really, right?
Yeah. 150, it'll be 152 out of.
With 64.
174.
Yeah.
It'll be.
That's our, that's our pressure. So you've seen this before? We've, we've talked about this a number of times this year. Post-budget last year, after the budget was passed and we started getting all these students in and as the summer progressed, we were getting all these students in, we had to hire a number of certified staff members to, to address a number of issues. Uh, we had a .75 English language learner teacher. We've gotten a number of students, I think a significant number of students, and I think you've seen the trend around the entire state that are non-native English speakers, um, English language learners. So we had one person last year that was hired as a .75. So they were three quarters, so basically a little less than four days a week, trying to service five schools, kids in every, kids in every building. We made that person a 1.0 last year. Again, a lot of this is through the, the SER 2 and the ARPESR fund. I'll come, I'll come back to that later. So we made that person a 1.0. You know, see in a bit later, one of the asks is to increase this to a 1.5 to get even a little bit more support. We know coming out of the pandemic, one of the most, one of the areas hit most hard was in the area of mathematics. We saw the biggest learning loss in mathematics. We used SER 2 funds to reinstate our math coordinator who was actually doing double duty as a math and science coordinator, giving, helping our elementary teachers out tremendously, providing the resources needed for our kids to, you know, make, regain a lot of lost learning in math. We had a .8 social worker last year. This year, uh, using the SER 2 money, we added that up to a 1.0 position, made that position full-time. I'll be talking a little bit more about adding FTE in that area. I'm going to show you some statistics that, um, can really bear that out. And Dave and I were at the legislative breakfast at CES the other day where the, the major topic of conversation amongst the superintendents in Southern Fairfield County and their legislators was around the mental health of our students. Uh, we added a .4 school psychology position at Jackie Hollow. Again, with the increases at the elementary levels, we had two kindergartens, one at Font Hollow, one at Stepney, a grade three at Font Hollow, a grade four section at, at Stepney. We had a split position between STEM and Massey to try to address some of the caseloads at those two locations. And then finally, we added .4 FTE. We didn't add any staff there, but we just, with our existing staff, added some time because they needed, they need the time for the, the service hours in students' individualized education plans. So this was all picked up out of SER 2 and ARPESR. As we stand right now, when we come back from the, when we come back from the break, there are a couple of other pieces where we're using the ARPPEA grant, the ARP special ed grant, which is only for this, only for the remainder of this year. But one is to pick up a pre-K teacher. We saw that number of 64 with more kids coming. We need to add a pre-K teacher to help pick that up. A .2 school psychologist in the pre-K, the person who does all the evaluations. The, right now that person's .6. There's no way they can do any evaluations. And then Jen and Darlene will give more information. I'll talk a little bit about it tonight, but we're also adding a, a special education, an alter, uh, an interim alternative room at Jackie Hollow to try to keep kids at Jackie Hollow. The special ed department has done a great job in, in terms of coming up with cost containment structures. And this is a way to try to keep kids at Jackie Hollow. We know that yes, it's A, it's more cost effective for us to keep them in district rather than have them outplaced, but we also know we can do it better. They're, they're awesome. We have some great programs and, you know, we have a chance to kind of pilot something this year. In the non-certified area coming into this year, again, these are all positions that we are currently paying for. And again, some of that has been allocated to SER 2. Some of it is earmarked. We haven't taken it. It's being paid out of the operating expenses, but we haven't applied for the ARPESR reimbursement yet on some of these positions. Again, we talked about the math. We, we added what we call a high-impact math support tutor at each of the elementary schools to work with our students in math. You heard about the behavior techs. You heard from the behavior techs, uh, I think two meetings ago, um, we've added behavior techs, four behavior techs at those locations there to make sure we have a behavior tech at every building. I said, I think with the exception of Massey. And then we have a lunch pair added to Jackie Hollow. All right. A really busy slide. I showed this slide last year. Uh, these next two slides just kind of show a little bit of the trend of enrollment. So, you know, bear with me on this one. This was last, now, again, the numbers don't bear out that you're in the 3366. You'll see this has more kids because now this is accounting for outplaced students. This is, these are students that we don't report out on. They may go to CES. They may go to another school that, uh, they're outplaced to another school. So that district, um, you know, reports to the state on those, on those students, but we still are financially responsible for those students. Really that, that's not as, tells as much of the story as what we saw from last year. So again, I use from the budget presentation last year to the budget, the Monday before, to the Monday before the, this budget presentation today. This is our, this is our, our student population. And what's really, and we saw kind of a similar trend last year, is if you look at the cohorts. is if you look at the cohorts, so this kindergarten last year becomes this first grade. This first grade becomes this second grade. The second grade becomes third grade, so on and so forth. If you look at this kindergarten cohort here, a hundred ninety-three kids when they're in kindergarten, two-twenty in first grade. Twenty-seven kids added to that cohort. Two-twenty became two-thirty-nine, added nineteen. Two-thirty-seven became two-forty-six. We added nine. So you see the additions in every grade, including ninth grade, which for years, we always saw a drop in students from eighth grade to ninth grade because they would go to a Profield School, they could go to Fairchild Wheeler, they could go to Abbott Tech, they'd go to a number of other schools. And so even with that, we still saw an increase in students transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade at Massey. So that was last year to this year. I did just change the slide. It looks exactly the same. All this is, is this is this year to next year. And all I did was just roll the numbers up for all intents and purposes. There are a few kids that we know are in the enrollment school, so the numbers might be off one or two on a certain spot. But this is basically just a roll-up from this year to next year. Now, if you look at it, we should be going from thirty-three ninety-two to thirty-three forty-five because our largest class right now is our senior class. There's two-hundred-and-ninety-nine students at Massey. Not all two-ninety-nine will graduate. We'll have some of our special ed students that will remain on for a few years afterward. So we don't lose all two-ninety-nine, but it's our biggest class in the district. They roll out. So this two-fifty, I kind of just took a rough estimate and said, two-fifty will probably become two-sixty. So it looks like we should be down like fifty students, but remember that trend that I just showed you on the previous page? We haven't seen that yet. Where, like I said, these numbers are already outdated just at Stepney. We already have six more kids there. Our trend the past few years has not been to lose kids as the year's gone on. It's only been to gain kids. So I don't anticipate us necessarily being at this number. I think, yeah, at minimum, we'll be closer to the number we're at right now.
And you kept the kindergarten numbers about the same?
I did. I did.
Right, yeah.
That's all I did. So you'll see exactly, Christine. So here's our projections from this year to next year. So this is this year. This is next year. So you'll see for kindergarten, I just kept it at fifty-three, just not counting. Talk about this a little bit. I'll talk about this a little bit more because you're gonna see this addition of two sections here. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But these are the projections that we roll up from this year to next year. And this would be like this year to the start of next year, we'll be at forty-eight, but this, remember, this number only goes up, that pre-K number, because kids turn three and they get into the program. And we started around fifty this year, which was high. Normally, we start in the thirties. We started at fifty this year, and we're at sixty-four now. Font Hallow. Again, one of the wild cards, I think, for our district is, will we see this again? We had one-twenty-five in K this year. There was, last year, we started out at eighty-four in kindergarten. It went from eighty-four, at one point, that got October first, to one-twenty-five. And so what we've done is we've built in one-twenty-five again. I don't know. Hopefully, was this year the start of a trend, or was it a, people keep enough kids home for kindergarten for a year during COVID and not send their kids? We've seen some of that. So we have to keep an eye on that. We see an increase of two sections here. I'll talk about the section sizes and all of that. And then Stepney will be up, just a handful of kids, if we just roll everybody over. So here's our staffing request. And there's a lot of them. Again, we are dealing with the two drivers of our staffing request, once again. Enrollment and dealing with our students with that are having a lot of social emotional issues and trying to get them back on track. And hopefully, we can do that and get things moving in the right direction. On this side of the sheet right here, these are those positions that I showed you earlier. These are the positions that were already added into. These are folks that are already working this year. Remember that point-two-five ELL teacher, the math and science coordinator, the social worker, the school psychologist. Those are all positions that are in our budget. Now, actually, everything with an asterisk is either being picked up by, on this side, S R two and ARP S R, because those were the two that came to us sooner. So these ones are in right now. These people are, these are actual bodies that are working in our district right now. We have a couple people here that are in the ARP IDA that I talked about before, that'll be starting right after the holiday here. I just want to kind of go through each of these new positions on the left side with you. Number one, we're looking for three elementary teachers, two at Font Hallow, and one at Monroe Elementary. But actually, it's actually two at Monroe Elementary, but I'll talk about this one separately. I talked about it with special education, because the pre-K teacher is at Monroe Elementary too. But right now, we're talking about three regular education teachers at Monroe Elementary and Font Hallow. Font Hallow, right now, we have four sections of fifth grade. And then, you know, five behind them. This group of one-eleven will be coming into fifth grade next year. So that'll be five sections of twenty-two. If we can't do four sections, it would be it would be sections of twenty-eight and twenty-seven. Can't do that in fifth grade, especially with everything going on right now. So we'd be adding a section here. And then we also have five sections of first grade right now, but six sections of kindergarten. So next year, our first grade has to be six sections. So we'll be adding a section in fifth grade, adding a section in first grade, and really keeping a close eye on this. That's where I'm, in this whole budget, where I'm most hopeful in terms of maybe we get a little pressure relieved there.
I don't need to interrupt, but at all these places we are talking about adding in sections, is the space there?
There's space there, but we've talked about doing a study. We're really gonna have to start probably this year. We can probably finagle our way through it for a year.
She reluctantly nodded her head.
Reluctantly nodded. Her mask above her eyes.
Rubber rooms.
It's gonna be, but it's tight. And that's where, I went back about the busing situation. It's not a, Monroe has the best class size numbers, but there's not a lot of room to grow there in terms of, you know, other classrooms. Font Hallow, we moved the daycare out, moved that over to Jackie Hallow. So we picked up a little space there, but it's tight. The other position is at Monroe Elementary. Again, we have a section of two in eighth grade right now. And that would become, but it's three all behind it. So that two would become three next year. So we'd be picking up a section there and then a section of pre-K. Again, this is a little misleading. It's three right now. It's gonna be four January early. Yeah, Alan?
Joe, I had a question about Monroe Elementary. We're talking about the increased mental health needs, the pre-K students moving into kindergarten, the counseling, but you only have a point-eight psychologist?
There is, there's a point, there's a point six psychologists right now in the preschool. Actually, Monroe has one-point-four.
Well, the preschool has a point-six. K-five has a point-six. And there's an additional point-two for that K-five person at a district.
Yes.
So Monroe Al has a point-six K-five and a point-six pre-K right now.
Yeah. And that point-six pre-K is gonna become a point-eight pre-K. That was the part of the point-two that I was talking about before. So right now, Monroe Al has one-point-four psychologists between pre-K and the school. A point-six for the K-five population and a point-eight for the preschool.
How does a point-six get all that done?
She does her best. We all do our best.
Like, when she's not there, who does the job? I mean, I don't get it.
We, so every day of the week, I do have a mental health professional available. It may not be the exact person that that student is accustomed to working with, but between our school counselor and our school psychologist, we do have someone, you know, to respond to crises and things like that.
Okay. The other thing I want to address, if we add, we're there now, but with the addition of any elementary teachers, let alone three, we're tapped out with our specials teachers. We have specials teachers crisscrossing this district. It's wildly inefficient. We have three PE teachers that go to Font Hallow. Three music teachers that go to Font Hallow, two music teachers at Stepney. Every teacher needs a duty-free period to prep. They all need a lunch period, a half-hour lunch period. You can't use their travel time for that. That wouldn't be right for them. So we eat into a lot of time with that. If we add more pieces, right now, we're maxed to the gills. It would just be impossible to provide our specials instruction to those students if we don't add some FTE there. So we'd be looking at three part-time teachers, which PE might be easier to get, music and art might be a little bit more challenging.
And Joe, I know it's stupid and it's very miniscule, but on top of that, you're paying them to travel.
Yeah, well, that's
And wait a minute, wait a minute. I didn't mean that the wrong way. I traveled. I wanted to get paid for it. I meant that just so people know, we're also paying them to travel from school to school every day.
Yep. Yeah, it's wildly inefficient. And I mean, I have to say, Julia's back there. Julia Strong does a great job coordinating the special schedules, especially in the fine performing arts and, you know, making magic happen to get people going. But we're tapped out. It just, you can't do it. You just can't. A couple of years ago, when we had some budget struggles, we talked about library media specialists. We removed a library media specialist at Stepney Elementary. This budget would be reinstating that library media specialist back, what we've done for, kind of cobbled it together for the past two years, where we've had the library media specialist at Monroe Elementary splitting between Monroe Elementary and Stepney to provide the digital citizenship curriculum and the research curriculum for those students. Not really getting the same as what they're getting at Font Hallow with the library media specialist there. Again, we've talked quite a bit already about the pre-K teacher and the preschool, I'm sorry, and the point-two preschool psychologists. That's the positions we were just talking about. So that would be adding a fourth section here to pre-K for next year and increasing the load of that school psychologist in the preschool program to be able to cover that. Next, we have a point-four speech and language and two special education teachers. The speech and language person is already being paid through the ARP IDA grant. This is a position we've had all year, trying to pick up for services. We just didn't have enough FTE there. So that's just, again, that's not adding a person. That was adding hours to existing staff, as it was the two special education teachers. Again, I'll make a, I'll steal a little bit of Jen and Darlene's thunder, because I have my graph that shows staffing and enrollment over the years. And if you look at Jen and Darlene, you know, when we were at three-hundred-and-sixty-seven kids, special education students in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, we were at about thirty-five special education teachers. We have remained relatively flat for the last six or seven years, while the number of students has risen quite significantly. So we have, I'm sorry, two teachers there. One is for that alternative interim program at the middle school to try to keep kids in-house rather than having them outplaced. Then we have another point-five to help cover the transition program. As it stands right now, our transition program is wildly successful. Again, it's another cost containment strategy that Jen and Darlene came up with to keep our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-olds in district. Right now, we have a staff member who goes over there, but she also teaches here, so she can't be full-time over there. So what ends up happening is Jen goes down and teaches, Darlene goes down and teaches, Risa and Emily goes down and teaches, I don't know if anyone else does, but so this would be baking that position full-time and backfilling that person here at Massey. And then the last half of the position would be at Jackie Hallow in STEM, just to even out the caseloads of special ed teachers throughout the district. Next is a one-point-oh school social worker. We went a long time in this district without a social worker. Took many years for us to get a point-eight in. Last year with the grant, we were able to make it from point-eight to point-two. This is absolutely critical that we continue with the needs of our kids right now. I'll show you some stats in a few minutes. Like I said, when Dave and I went to the Legislative Breakfast the other day, this was one of the most significant talked-about areas, was the area of mental health with our students. So we have, like I said, one social worker who's housed at Massey, but services the entire district, so has to go between five schools to do this stuff. I hate comparing, but I sent my colleagues, other dirt-bee towns in our area, Crumwell New Town, Brookfield, Regent Fifteen, I sent them an email over the weekend, just saying, hey, just curious, how many social workers do you have and how are they deployed? They all had at least one social worker, in a lot of cases, multiple social workers, just in their high school. And then they had other social workers deployed in each building throughout the district. We have one for our entire district to service five, five schools. So looking for another social worker for the entire district. You guys have probably seen this, so please bear with me. But Abraham Maslow was a psychologist, and he talked about the hierarchy of needs and where do we want human beings to be, where do we want our students to be? We want them to be at the top of this pyramid, where they realize self-actualization, where they're ready to access curriculum, where they're ready to learn and come to school. But they can't do that if the basic needs aren't being met. And the basic needs are usually food and shelter, safety, and psychological well-being. And that's where we're seeing our biggest problems right now with our students is, you know, really struggling with relationships, friendships, and whatnot, and really feeling a sense of connectedness to their peers, to the school community. We really need to work on this. And this is a, this needs to be collaborative with the social worker and the parents, and the families. I asked our guidance department, Anne O'Doy, provided me with some data that I think really speaks to this. Last year is represented in the blue. This year, to date, is represented in the pink. The red indicates the trend that we're on. If we continue at this rate, which is where we are right now, this is where we'll be at the end of the year. This is how many 211 calls. That's the emergency assistance line that we call when students are struggling with anxiety, depression, ideational thoughts, and whatnot. Our numbers of 211 calls, the number of times we've had to send students to emergency rooms, the number of times they've been admitted to the hospital, intensive outpatient programs, partial hospital programs, residential treatment, so on and so forth, has skyrocketed this year. It's an issue in Monroe. It's not endemic to Monroe. It's going on all over the place. And we need support. We need to be able to support these, we need to be able to support these kids. We need to be able to support their families. Very similar data at Jackie Hallow, in terms of, again, this is last year, then this is this year, and then this is, it says projected. If we continue on this trend that we're on, that's where we will end up this year. For those same types of higher levels of care, crisis intervention, and stuff, so. I can't Yeah, good, Justin?
Do we know what, obviously, the data is pretty alarming. Do we know what's driving the uptick specifically, right? I mean, we can all say COVID, but specifically, what is driving the huge uptick in mental health issues?
I could ask Anne to come and address that, Justin. I don't want to speculate. I have my thoughts. I think the social isolation that we've experienced in the past two years, I mean, I'd be hard-pressed to think that that wasn't a huge part of what's going on. The tethering our kids have been to their technology, the influx in social media, the number of social media incidents that we're experiencing with kids just, you know, posting things that we would shake our heads about, like, how could you even think that was okay? So I could ask Anne to come in at one of our upcoming meetings and talk about that a little bit.
A lot of it's the social isolation.
I'm actually speculating. I was curious to see if there was any, you know, data to support it, and whether or not we can tie that to policy, and some of the policies that have been instituted, and the impact that that's having on the kids, right? Because there's a lot of things that have popped up, you know, that created this situation, and obviously, the data shows out. And obviously, the data shows out that it hasn't been good for the kids and their mental health.
Absolutely.
It was trending upwards before the pandemic, but the pandemic kind of made it worse because of the social isolation. Kids being socially isolated from each other for almost a year and a half.
Yeah. Last three positions that I just wanted to touch on. I talked about the ELL, how we had, remember, we increased our ELL teacher to a 1.0 last year. They had about 30 kids at the time. We're up above 45 at this point. They have to do 65 assessments, working across five different buildings. It's untenable for the person. So, we're looking to add a point-five ELL person to help ease that burden a little bit for all our staff. The K-5 ELA coordinator, that came out a number of years ago. Two really big, important pieces of legislation that came out this year. The Right to Read Bill, which talks about the science of reading. And then also a bill on dyslexia, that we're really going to need someone to have their hands on the steering wheel as we roll this out. I know Sheila's probably talking more about that and we talked about curriculum instruction. And then the last one is a chemistry/physics position at Massey. The chemistry/physics unicorn, I guess, because certification in science is really difficult. But, a number of years, a few years ago, Monroe, like pretty much the rest of the state, started teaching biology first. All the kids come in now in ninth grade. They used to come in, some kids would take general science in grade nine. Some kids would take biology in grade nine. Then, most of the kids would take biology in grade 10. Now, all of our kids are taking biology in grade nine. That's created a bubble. And in science, it's really difficult because it's very certification-specific. So, that bubble now has moved up. And now, they're taking chemistry and they have to take physics. And we have a number of staff who have cross-endorsements to teach biology, but not many that can teach chemistry and physics. So, we're looking for someone to be able to pick this bubble up. We have to get someone in there. These kids just won't be able to take, they won't be able to take a science class next year. So, we're looking for preferably someone with a chemistry or physics, chemistry and physics certification. Right now, we only have two physics teachers. If Jim Stolz was here, he could probably, you know, enlighten us a little bit more on the bubble and how we did it. We try to send, we try to split this year the kids between, normally, they would go biochem-physics. What we did with some kids last year is we went bio-physics-chem to get the, to try to, you know, kind of even it out. And then, you know, the physics kids will take chem their junior year, and the kids taking chem will take physics their junior year. But it's created a bubble that we have to address.
Hey, Joe.
Yep.
Knowing that's a unicorn, is it possible you're going to want two positions? Since there's a, as of tonight's news, there's a thousand shortage of, thousand-person shortage of teachers in the state. Are you going to be able to find a unicorn?
You know, the one thing I'll say about Monroe, it's an attractive place to teach. I do think it's a good place. People that come here generally don't leave. I think it has a good reputation that way. I think that's good. So, you know, I hope, you know, hopefully, we can get someone. If not, it might be we get, hire someone for a one-year position and have to hire someone else, you know, the next year. It would be nice. We have hired them in the past. We have had some folks that have the chemistry and physics certification. It's a tough one to find, though, for sure.
What about speech? That's a pretty tough area now, too.
Speech, we're okay because the speech that we have here is existing staff. It was just added to staff. Non-certified staff requests that we have coming in. I've already talked about these before. These were through the grants, the high effect math supports, the behavior tech. The lunch pair should be on there for our best, I think. Behavior tech would go to that program. You see that through the ARPIDEA to go to the program at the middle school. Looking for four pair educators, four 25-hour pair educators. Our elementary schools have been busting the last two years. We've added a number of sections. We'd love to try to get as much support, especially into kindergarten. I walk into kindergarten rooms with Lee, Kelly, and Ashley, and I walk out and I say, they should be making my salary and I should be making their salary. The stuff that they're doing and the juggling that they're doing is absolutely amazing. We have the increase at the preschool program, looking for a pair educator here. This is another important one here, too. We have a secretary at central office. We used to have two secretaries in the front office, at central office. Years ago, one retired. It wasn't backfilled. Then there was another one that they were going to backfill. Actually, when that first one retired, they were supposed to only, they were going to backfill half of it. Ended up cutting the whole thing. Then they, then they had another secretary up there who retired. We didn't backfill that one because of budgetary issues the past couple of years. But it's had a direct impact on Sheila and Paul, really, because that person supported Sheila and Paul. So, now Sheila and Paul come in on the weekends and do their POs and do that stuff. We really need some support up there in central office. And then, the last really small ticket item here is two team leader stipends at the middle school. One for sixth grade at STEM. There's not a team leader at STEM. That's a really small increase, like $3,500. But the second one would be for a team leader in world language. Last year, we cut the instructional leader position in world language. So, our world language instructional leader, who's with us tonight, Lisa, is an assistant principal at the middle school. Really difficult to be an assistant principal at a school and get to, and get to other, and get to Jockey Hollow, get to other schools. So, this world language instructional, I'm sorry, this world language team leader could help coordinate a little bit of that curriculum with Lisa. It could be the point person instead of, basically, trying to get down and work with all of the teachers. They could connect and work together. The risks, you know, they never change. Enrollment, any unforeseen costs. You know, last year, one of the budget assumptions, and I didn't put it on this year, was that we'd be living in a post-COVID world. We're still not. So, you know, are there any other long-term COVID costs that we don't recognize right now? And then, as always, you know, special education. You know, we are comfortable that, you know, we have that contingency, but you never know if there's any anticipated special education cost. You guys put that, if you guys wrote these dates down before.
Sorry. Can you go back one?
Yep.
Is it most of the stuff that you presented all grant money?
Is most of the stuff all grant money?
Well, you had all the, yeah, that's it.
Yep, yep.
So, wouldn't that be on that list of the biggest risks?
The grant, the grant fund drawing up and heading a fiscal cliff. Yeah, good point. It's a great point. You're right. Yeah, of these, I think it's, there's 9.45 of these positions are tied up in grants right now. 9.7 of them are not. So, absolutely.
But the 9.45?
Yep.
You're putting that in, that's in the operating budget, right?
We're trying to put this into the operating.
Everything's in the operating budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's currently in grants, operating budget for next year.
It's got to be. We hit the cliff, like we said. We'll fall off it. I mean, I'm not going to have a choice.
Joe, this presentation, can you print it out?
I will print it out for that, yeah. I will definitely have it printed for you guys.
It'll go on our website.
Absolutely, 100%, yeah. I was tweaking it right before I moved out there. I was thinking for weeks that I still, right before I left, I was still making a few connections. So, I'll definitely print it. I'll have it whole bunch printed, put right into that executive summary section.
Joe, one other?
And it'll be attached to the, I'm sorry, Dave. It'll be attached to the agenda.
So, one other thing, in your budget, it is, I understand it, all the staffing requests come out of all the grants. They go into operations. And then, what are your thoughts of then what to do with the grant money?
I mean, so that's a million-dollar question. I think it's going to have to be a conversation with a lot of people. You know, we have programming that we would love to be able to do with some of that. But right now, to me, the primary need is right here. And if we had to use it on FTE, then, you know, I would use it there. If there's a way, you know, we could smooth it out a little bit over the next couple of years. Some of the, most of this grant money is, you know, this year and next year. So, if we can kind of smooth the cliff out a little bit and, you know, if we have to half on something, however, however we do it, this is an important FTE request.
I think it was an excellent presentation. I just want to, I just want to say that, like, it was very informative and highlighted the things that needed highlighting. And I think it was a very good presentation.
Keep going?
We just have, I have, I said a lot of what the poor elementary folks are going to say, but I'll have to tell you again. But yeah, you know, I didn't talk to your presentation. But tonight, as part of our budget workshop, we figured we could do it more pretty quickly with the elementary and with curriculum instruction.
It was department, yeah. Okay, we just have that one. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Dennis and to Justin, and welcome back, everybody else. As Joe mentioned, a lot of our elementary budget is really driven by enrollment, and he went over those numbers with you. Joe, if you could just go to that next slide, I'm sorry. So, all preschools have seen increased enrollment this year. And as Joe mentioned, we are looking to increase sections next year. So, Monroe Elementary increasing by one and K-5, Von Hallow by two. And then, we are watching that preschool section as well. We do have 64 this year, and we have 40 who are going to be kindergarten-aged, but we still have 24 remaining and more coming down the pipe. And what happens when we enroll new preschool students is every special education preschool student that we enroll, we also enroll a typical peer to go with them. So, next year, we're looking at, you know, if we enroll 14 new students this year, that's really 28 next year because we would enroll a typical peer to match that special education peer. So, enrollment is definitely a big driver. If you can go to the next slide, please. So, what we control at the elementary level is really instructional supplies. And so, enrollment, of course, drives instructional supplies. Much of what we use throughout the year is consumable, so we need to replace that for the following year. What we've done over the years is try to just have consistency across the schools. So, we look at, you know, we might have a math instructional line, for example, and we just make sure that per pupil, we all have the exact same amount. So, our amounts vary across our schools, but they're the same in per pupil. And some examples are like math is $3 a student, health might be $4 a student, and we've been consistent across our schools. So, Joe mentioned some of the new staff that we're looking for. We're welcome to, you know, answer any questions about that, but I don't know if you want to get some.
Thank you. That covers it. I mean, Joe really could address a lot of our talking points, so there's not much more to say. Enrollment, increased enrollment, increased enrollment, increased enrollment.
Right.
It really hit our budget lines.
Lee, I'm going to jump on a point that I thought Nick was going to jump on, but I'm going to cut him off.
I was letting her finish.
I thought she finished. I took a pause.
You got the part, don't.
Lee, how are you making it at your school alone? Just one administrator. So, be honest with me. I've known you for 30 years. How are you doing this alone?
I'm not going to lie. It's a big school. It's a big job. I would have to say my staff helps me. If it weren't for the highly effective staff members I have, super talented school psychologist, reading specialist, school counselor, school nurse, I would not be able to do what I do. Those people are all spread very, very thin because we're all singletons. So, I have a good work ethic. I have older children, but it's a big job. It takes a lot of time.
So, how do you do, like, a central office meeting? How do you go to a PPT? How do you do, how do you go to a conference, Lee? I mean, seriously, be honest. How do you leave the building?
Well, we do have teachers in charge. New in our budget last year that went into effect this year. Each of our elementary schools has a teacher in charge to do just that. So, they are individuals we've identified who can be there to cover the building if one of us has to leave. And also, we are very collaborative in Monroe. You all know that. So, on occasion, our secondary instructional leaders and assistant principals come over and help out. So, Mark Schwartz has been to his alma mater, Von Hallow, Kevin Welch, Ian Moll, they will come over as well. Not to mention Jack or Joe on occasion.
The leader in charge. Joe, is that the 1,500? Am I according there?
Okay.
So, who's evaluating all your staff?
Also collaborative effort. So, Julia Strong comes over, and she does a handful of second and fifth-grade teachers. Joe Cobb, our superintendent, actually has some other second-grade teachers and first-grade teachers. Jack helps out with some of our music and art staff. Sheila helps out. So, because of that, it spreads it out, and it makes it a little easier for me.
You attend all the PPT meetings?
I do, and my school psychologist will also go. Sometimes John Parcell goes, so it helps out.
Nick, go ahead.
Yes, before I was so rudely interrupted, the point I was going to make was that, you know, I was, in tab six of our budget books, we have the staffing per, we have the students per grade per school, which is actually really helpful to see each literal section here. And Jockey Hollow had, we're projecting next year for Jockey Hollow to have 746 students for the budget, this budget book year. And Von Hallow's projected to be at 676. So, the difference is, I always embarrass to do math on the fly because I teach math, and if I get it wrong, it's embarrassing. And now, I can't do it. The difference is like 70 kids. There it is. It's 70 kids. And, you know, this budget is packed, chock-full with FTEs that are so needed. And I don't, I don't know if we can get another administrator in there, but I think next year's budget, we should be looking at an AP at Von Hallow. I mean, just looking at the student numbers. And frankly, what you just described, that, you know, our superintendent has a particular, not caseload, but he has...
More than one.
He has teachers who he evaluates, our assistant super, our, you know, Julia, who does so many things and that has to do there. You know, if we had an AP at Von Hallow, these other administrators whose plates are already overflowing can focus on their plate. So, I think it's something to look at and talk about.
Anybody else have any questions? Shannon?
We're talking about increased enrollment. This isn't a question. This is from the multiple listing service that the realtors use for the home sales in Monroe. For 2016, it was 274. For 2017, it was 276. For 2018, it was 292. 2019, it was 314. And 2020, it was 377.
Yeah.
If you could see the graph, what that looks like. It's more impactful. It's dramatic. So, increased enrollment, that's what's driving us.
And it's families moving in, correct?
Well, the MLS won't organize that data, but it's Monroe, so you can jump to your own conclusions.
So, we have Jeff and Shannon, both real estate agents. What are people saying? Why do they want to move to Monroe?
Oh, it's always been schools. But that, like, that's not anything MLS is going to have data on. That's just, but that is a huge driving force for why people move to Monroe. You get more house for your money than you would in lower Fairfield County, and you get schools that are, you know, just as good, if not sometimes better. So, that's a driving force. And now, also, you know, people are moving here in droves with COVID and people who were working in the city or, you know, lower Fairfield County, whatever, maybe working from home or hybrid and can, and they want to get out of the city. That's what people are saying.
Yeah, and I think, Shannon, I think you made a point several months ago when, at one of the heights in the home sales, which I think is still going on. I think the point was very important is that people are moving to Monroe for the schools, obviously, but they're also buying a home and an office because a lot of people aren't commuting to where they used to commute, where they're going in two days a week or whatever. So, they're willing to go a little bit farther out and buy a larger home that has a place for them to have, like, a home office.
Working from home.
Yeah, relative to a smaller one. So, because I was surprised when the housing market was going crazy, a lot of the larger houses in Monroe were selling faster, and it's because people were, they needed a place to also work, who also had young children. So, it's just on and on.
And I want to let you know that I met with the three principals. I learned a lot. I learned a lot. Thank you for your time. Their budgets are very well thought out. Um, there's, they're based on needs here. And one thing that, um, I'm hoping we can do in our final discussions, like we do with the reading program last year, is there's a program called the Wilson-Gillingham Training.
Or Gillingham.
Yeah, and, um, and I learned that that's, uh, very important and we should try to find some funds to do that so we can get some early interventions at their levels rather than waiting until the kids are into Jackie Hollow, which hopefully would help reduce our, our spec ed burden. So, hopefully, we can, we can figure that out as well. But, um, thank you very much. A lot of hard work, very well, um, put together budget and with keeping everything in mind. So, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to thank the three of them too. They've, they've worked very closely the past couple of years. The three elementary principals have worked really closely to make sure we're equitable across the district and I think that's really important. You know, we see now we have, we used to have all kinds of variations in lines and, you know, now they've kind of streamlined it to price per student for, you know, certain supply, just to keep it equitable. I think that's important.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Sheila?
Good evening, everybody. And like the elementary principal said, some of my things you'll hear are repeats of some of the things that, um, Joe shared earlier in his presentation. But to kind of play off a comment that Shannon just was talking about, the housing market, I got a phone call today from a family who's looking at moving here from Fairfield. And she's not really sure if, if Monroe is the town that she wants, but she's heard such wonderful things about the schools and it's got such a great reputation. She wanted a little more information, so I chatted with her for a couple of minutes. She doesn't have any prospect of any house, they're only just starting to look, but she loves Monroe. So, I, I do think that this enrollment piece is going to just keep going for a while. Um, Joe, if you don't mind. So, I have a, a few budget lines that I wanted to highlight because when you look at the percentage increase, they're a little bit, um, higher, so I wanted to kind of explain what those were. And, um, Dave, you led me right into the first one. Because I have, um, increased some of my lines, kind of looking at PD and things for teachers. The professional development in-house facilitator actually plays off of, um, bringing us back to doing the Da Vinci Festival. So, there's an increase there. The best mentor has an increase because the State Department of Ed actually pays for our mentors. They had always paid for it, but then when the state got into trouble with money a few years ago, they didn't give us any. We were still required to pay our staff. Then the next year, they gave us partial payment. So, I always budget for the full payment for our mentors. And I'm just not sure. So, that could be $4,000 less than what I'm budgeting, but I don't know and I don't want us to be in the negative. So, I always budget the exact amount. As Joe mentioned, I put back in the ELA coordinator. It is a classroom teacher who gets a stipend or a reading person, whoever, you know, applies for the position, but is definitely something that is very much needed with this right-to-read legislation that is going to come back next year with a list of five resources that need to be used in our elementary schools for reading. They, it's either going to be K-2, K-3, or K-5. There's different varying topics out there, so I'm not really sure what it's going to look like until this whole committee, which has been legislatively chosen to work on this through the School of MEAG up at UConn. So, it's, it's going to be very interesting to see what that looks like, but it is going to require somebody to full-time take a look at that. I have been overseeing the K-5 ELA position and with the other things that I do, this is just going to be like well-consuming to make sure that we are where we need to be. And that's why I really think we need to put the person back in the position. They do get paid for three days over the summer to work on looking at our test scores and preparing things for the beginning of the school year. So, that's what that's in there. And Joe, if you can go to the next one?
Sheila, I've set a question about the right to read.
Sure.
What do they, what are they looking at? Curriculum?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And UConn's going to work on that? Not the state?
Well, it's the state, but they've hooked up with this group through UConn. But it's a state-driven program, a straight, state-driven committee that the, the 14 individuals on it are being chosen through legislature so that an elected official is choosing their representative to be on this committee. We're hoping that these people have educational backgrounds. We're not really sure what the backgrounds of the people who are, who are being chosen for this committee. It's another one of these wonderful unfunded mandates that's going to come down and that we have to put in place by the following school year. From what they're saying, they're going to choose five recommended programs and we have to choose one of those to put in place, which means we have to purchase the materials, we'll have to give professional development to our teachers. I'm not sure if Teachers College will be one of their choices. I mean, that's what we have used for years, have seen great success with our students and our teachers have had a tremendous amount of professional development that has been amazing. But I'm not sure if TC is going to be the chosen resource. So, if it's something different, there's going to be a lot of work that's going to need to be done for this. So, having somebody who can really focus on that full-time is going to be really important. And it's going to be really interesting to see what they choose. From what I understand, other states have done this, Colorado has, did this about two years ago. They have a list of like 13 different resources. We're not sure if the same company that did the work, the research committee, did the same work that Connecticut has hired. That's what we've heard, but there's no confirmation on that. So, that's why we're kind of looking at what Colorado has, but there's no confirmation that that's what the state's going to put forward for us. But it's going to have implications for sure.
So, we don't know how they're going to pick these programs?
They're using a national research-based pro, a company, which they haven't named, but there's one very well-known one out there that Colorado used, um, Texas used. So, we're thinking it's probably going to be that one. That's what people who have their ear to the state have said, but there's no confirmation on it yet. But it'll be really interesting to see. So, the next I have on here is in-service external vendor and that's where I play off of what Dave was talking about. I have put in money again this year to have people trained in Wilson or Orton-Gillingham. They're two different programs. We currently have a handful of teachers who are trained in Wilson. It's about $5,000 per teacher. Orton-Gillingham appears to be about the same cost per teacher. It is a full-year commitment by a teacher if they choose to go through this training. It includes a, a case study with a student where they're being observed by somebody from either Orton-Gillingham or Wilson as they go through the instruction. They have courses that they have to take at night. Um, it's, it's pretty intense, but teachers who have gone through the training have said it's some of the best training that they've ever done. And then they get an opportunity to work with our students with it too, which is wonderful. So, I actually have it in. Last year, it was cut and I have it in again this year and I'm hoping it doesn't get cut. And then I have an increase in the instructional supplies system-wide for art. Again, that's putting back in the supplies tip so that we can run the Da Vinci Festival, which we've, we cut from this year and obviously last year with COVID, we didn't have it. The last one, my science increase, is for my K-5 science coordinator. We have been, with the next generation science standards and the changes to curriculum at the K-5, well, K-12 level, but this is specific to K-5, Roseanne Houghton has been purchasing kits that come as 30, like individual resources. And then she's counting the number of students that we have at a grade level, so we're purchasing them system-wide and then divvying it up so that way I'm not having extra kits of extra materials sitting in schools by each grade level. And the last two years since we found these, I've actually paid for it through my budget, but we want to put it into, um, the system-wide instructional supplies for science, which is actually really where it belongs. So, you'll see a, a pretty hefty increase on that because it's about $11,000 to make that happen. And then not listed in any of these, Joe, you can go on to the next one, it's fine, is my curriculum writing, which actually has a decrease, but it's the highest line that I actually have. It's $32,000 and it's about $300 cheaper than last year. And that one, um, along with my new textbooks, which is about $36,000, they have minimal changes from last year. They're both related to new courses. So, the Spanish books that you're looking at a second review on, we've got some, um, new textbooks or, or resources to go along with the new state course on Black and Latino, which Ian Lowell will be sharing with everybody in the spring. Got some resources for the right-to-read legislation in there as well. So, there's curriculum writing related to right-to-read, curriculum writing for the Spanish courses, as well as for the new history course. So, those are not highlighted there because they're minimal changes, but they are the largest numbers on my budget. And I am asking for two positions this year. I typically ask for positions, um, but definitely that ELA coordinator is going to be huge with staying on top of what's going on with the changes due to legislation. And as Joe mentioned, um, four years ago, my administrative assistant secretary was cut. When she retired, the position was cut and it was made a joint, um, position with Paul Corse's secretary. Two years ago, when she retired, the position was cut again. And last year during COVID, because we had the Wednesdays off and because, you know, kids were in and out, we actually shared from Monroe Elementary, Nancy Cesuri came up to Monroe, to central office and covered for a few hours every day. And then on Wednesdays, Adrian Zimmer, who's over at Jackie Hollow as the receptionist, because everybody was home on Wednesdays, she came and spent the day at central office. So, that was kind of cutting and pasting it last year. And this year, there's nobody. So, there's a lot of things that go through both my office and Paul's that it would really be helpful if we could have somebody back in that position to support it. And my, when I did have the full-time person four years ago, she also supported the K-5 coordinators. So, the K-5 coordinator for ELA, math and science, because we had all three at the time. So, she would do copying and POs and everything for them as well. So, now Adrian is trying to do the POs, but they're doing all their own copying and organizing the materials. So, if we could get that extra secretarial support, it would be really helpful. And that was it.
Questions? Nick?
Uh, yeah, I just have two questions. The first one is on the interns.
Mm-hmm. They're back, they're still in.
They're still in.
They're still in.
But I did notice in the line items, um, so, uh, let's see, three years ago, I guess, we had interns at all five buildings.
We did.
And in this budget, you only have the interns at the elementary.
Correct. The board at the end of, during the budget season last year, put back in the interns at the three elementaries due to need. There's more permanent subs at the middle school and high school than there is at elementary. So, between the permanent sub and the intern, they're pretty much equally covered. But if, I mean, I don't think secondary folks behind me would argue having an intern in the building as well, but, you know, there, we can't add everything.
No, it's, but, no, but your explanation is a good one. The other question I had, which is more of a, a line item question, if that's all right. We have this object code 752904, that's benefits admin, professional development.
Yep. So, each, um, each of the administrators through their contract, and I don't remember how many contracts ago it, it went into place, but instead of giving us a monetary amount of an increase within our contract, they put in a clause saying that we each get $1,200 for professional development because at the time, we weren't going out to workshops because they were too expensive and we didn't have enough money in our professional development lines to be able to cover it. So, the $1,200, which is contractual to every administrator, would cover if we wanted to go to a national conference for airfare and hotel and the conference. So, that's why we have the 1,200. So, there, it's divvied up by like Monroe Elementary, you'll see one.
Yeah, per administrator.
Per administrator. So, at, um, like system-wide is John DeGeneres and Anne O'Doyd because they are K-12.
Right.
Then you'll have certain people who are special ed. So, it's Jen Darlene and Marissa, even though Marissa's a secondary instructional leader, she falls under spit.
My, I, that's a great explanation and it makes a lot of sense. I just, um, I want them to use it. I want them to go and, because if you look at the historicals, not counting last year, last year was, you know, and we go anywhere anyway. But looking back, you know, we budget for this every year and, um... It's not you, it's, I just, I want them to go do it, I want them to use it, so.
And Jack can attest that I send an email to everybody to remind them that you still have your $1,200 and it's now, you know, springtime.
May 15th.
Yeah. Don't, don't forget to use it. I know in the past, I've used it to buy my laptop.
Got it.
Because that's something we, if we're not using it for professional development, we can use it for technology to support our, our position. I know a couple of the principals have used it to buy, um, books for book clubs to do PD within their building. So, and that's an okay choice for them to use as well, if they don't have it within their operating budget.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else, Sheila? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, you got that meeting, right?
Ron, go ahead. You can head out if you need to. Okay, we will move on to, uh, old business. We have a curriculum second review with a vote anticipated. Do I have a motion to approve the curriculum for Spanish for Spanish speakers, Spanish 2A and 2B and Spanish 2 resources as presented last meeting? Motion by Jerry, second by Christine. Any discussion?
Just one question on the Spanish 3. When looking it up, the, that's the, um, increase there. Last time I looked, it was only a 2018 book. They said they were out of date and was, you know, doing that money to increase the funding. Is it 2018 or is it something new that you couldn't get in print?
Yeah, please.
Spanish 3?
Hi, I'm Lisa Peterson. And I'm not, I'm not sure I understood the question. It's, it's about the textbooks?
Correct. It's, yeah, well, it's textbook and tape, I trust, right? It's, um, what was the name of it? Sanderos, Level 3? When I looked it up to kind of, I mean, 225 copies, $116 a piece for, for student, I was just like, is that, that's one, a great deal if that's what you're getting, it's new. But you had mentioned that it was out of date before, so is this?
No, 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 and Sanderos is the new text.
Sanderos is, okay.
The text that we had, I believe we bought them in 2007? 2006? Those are no longer in print. Sanderos is a brand new series.
2018, I couldn't see anything newer, so I didn't know whether we're buying something at the turn.
No, it may be that 2018 is their new version, but it's.
So, we don't know when the next transition is for them. You know, we're not buying it tomorrow, it's going to be 2020.
No.
Okay. Just checking, thanks.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? No? Hearing none, all in favor? All are in favor, motion passes. Thank you very much. We move on to new business, policy. We have a first review of policy number 9311, formulation, adopt, adaptation, amendment policies. So, um, we all got a, uh, draft recommendation. Shannon, would you, uh, go through that and give us the, uh, recommended or not recommended changes?
Yep. This policy details the process to be followed by the board to create, revise, and adopt policies for the school district. The revisions include the clarification of the required votes needed to amend or adopt a policy. It also revises the language for the procedures to be followed to amend or adopt policies, including the number of board members on the policy committee, the frequency that policies will be reviewed, and who may propose policy to the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, you're on policy committee, any comments on this?
Uh, yeah, I, I do, I have a few things. Um, the vote went 2-1 to move, move it on. And here's the reason why I voted no. So, if you'll just give me a minute to make, make sure I hit, hit this right. Uh, there's really three reasons. I'm still not sure why we're taking out the at least. And as I've mentioned in the past, if you look at other, like if you look at Trump, they have 10. We have three. If we take out the at least, it's limiting us to that three. And I know we're not voting on this yet, I just wanted to bring this up. So, that's my one issue. The next is, I'm not sure with everything the superintendent has to do, I still don't know why we're taking out the fact that employees and residents cannot propose a policy. You know, when you look at the, the three reasons why we are here, one of them is to pass to... policy, an employee can't add a policy, then we're flooding it off to the superintendent. They will now go to that superintendent, hand in all the policies, he will look or she, will look at the policies and move them out. So I just want you to consider that. And then the last thing is, and let me see if I can find it, oh, we took out something really important. The policy committee must report back within a reasonable time. So we struck that to say the policy committee will review all proposed policies or policy changes afforded to it on a prioritized basis. What it doesn't say is that we will pass on all policies. The policy committee's job is not to keep policy away from you, it's to bring it to you and let the full board vote. Once again, I'm afraid we are really silencing a tremendous amount of people here by saying, no, the policy committee will look at its list of 20, prioritize when they'll do it, but it never says it will do all 20. It just says we'll prioritize. So once again, by taking out that reasonable amount of time, I'm just not sure how it works. Sorry, those are my three.
No, no. Okay, any other discussion? Nick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to pick up on a few points that Jerry brought up and expand upon them a little bit. I also agree that the policy committee should be expanded. I disagree with the striking of at least. Frankly, I think our policy committee should be four, and I think that we should be including ex officio members of students and teachers and staff members. I also agree with Jerry that removing of the employee of the Monroe Board of Ed and any Monroe resident kind of solves a problem that doesn't exist. For example, you know, our former board chair said that I was the only person in her 12 years that, other than the super, the assistant super, that proposed a policy. I think by removing this language and allowing Board of Education employees or residents to propose policies, it's an important thing, and I don't think we need to remove it. There's not this barrage of policies that are being proposed by these people, and if there were, then I think it's definitely something that we should look at. At the policy committee meeting, it was suggested that by removing this, if a resident or a staff member wanted to propose something, that they could filter it through the superintendent, and the superintendent could kind of screen those policies. I think that has the potential to be a conflict of interest, because, as Jerry said, we set policy. And if a staff member wants to propose a policy change that has to do with the superintendent, the superintendent could say, well, I don't like this one, I'm not going to show it to the board. And that's not our superintendent, that's the office of the superintendent. The next question is kind of a legal question, and I don't know if this would be forwarded to our lawyer, but we're striking out that policies will be adopted after consideration at two regular meetings by two-thirds of board members, and then in this same policy, we're fixing the contradiction. But I don't know if this, the adoption of the revision has to be by two-thirds. So there's two thresholds in the policy now. So to revise this one, to fix it, does it have to be two-thirds or a simple majority? And the last point I would make about 9311 is a very, very important point, and I want to expand upon what Jerry said. I am very, very much opposed to the, to the striking of the last sentence in point five here. This takes away the policy committee's mandate to report back to the full board on any policy that is proposed to it. The way I interpret this, the policy committee could not prioritize something indefinitely, and they could shelve something indefinitely as they see fit. I don't agree with that. I don't think that things should be able to be killed in committee, and that's really not just for us, that's more of a overall philosophy. I think that everything proposed should have to be reviewed by the policy committee. I think also that one of the issues the policy committee has is really frankly just a matter of timing. I looked back before our meeting today, and the policy committee met a total of five times this calendar year, and it was, the total times of their meetings was three and a half hours. So completely understand that we're all volunteers, but I think three and a half hours over 12 months is, I think there needs to be a little bit more time dedicated to this, it's such an important function of our board. I also frankly, I don't really know why we're reviewing this right now. I don't, to the best of my knowledge, these revisions didn't come from CAE. A lot of the times, the way that these policies work is we get a suggested revision from CAE, that's not always the case. I think there's a lot of other policies that we should be looking at, but since this is the one in front of us, I do have those concerns with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. I mean, we do have, you know, we're not voting on it tonight, we do have consideration, further discussion next month on it. So we could adopt it, not adopt it, make changes to it, and come back, depending on what we'd like to do. Any further discussion on this? Alan?
So this didn't come from CAE? Is that correct?
To the best of my knowledge, the revisions in this policy were not CAE suggested.
Then who suggested them?
It wasn't me.
Wasn't me? I don't know. I don't know. It's put on the agenda, I don't see, the agenda gets sent to me, and I show up at the policy meeting. I don't write the agenda. So I don't, I'm, I'm answering you honestly, I'm not trying to be a jerk, I don't know.
And George is not here to answer that question, so...
So nobody knows how this...
Unless Shannon, no, you don't know.
No, I would just, I would just be...
Shannon too, she just gets the agenda, right Shannon, am I saying that right?
Yeah, I would just be assuming, so I don't, I don't, I can't, I don't want to speak for George.
Yeah, I don't either, I don't...
So we don't know how this came into being?
No, but I mean, to Nick's point, as far as the meetings, I don't see anything in here that restricts the policy committee of meeting more often or earlier. And I think, I think that flexibility is good, so that Shannon can schedule policy committees, depending on your workload, their workload, earlier or more often or once a month. So I think that flexibility is in there, and if you have a huge caseload, then you should consider that.
They don't have to meet on Mondays, do they?
No. No, they can meet whenever they want. It's probably just convenient to come here beforehand, but, you know, to meet a, to meet a half hour, you know, beforehand with numerous agenda items, they do have that flexibility. I don't see anything here, in here that prohibits it. And I would encourage the policy committee that if you have a lot on your plate, to come in and meet more often and earlier, depending on what.
I'm not, I'm not sure of your question, though, Alan, because when we, when we meet, we have to post the meeting, right? So we could meet any day of the week, I guess, we just have to legally post it and share the agenda.
24 hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha. I wasn't sure about meeting off of a Board of Ed meeting, if that makes sense, like meeting on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, I wasn't sure how that went.
Right, right. I, I do know, you know, obviously there was a lot of discussion when, when Nick brought up the policy, when we had to look at it and say, what, what are, what is our policy on it, and how do all of us become more aware of the whole 9,000 series policies?
Right, right.
And all of that, and how, how does it get changed? You know, less is more, so we can certainly still think of this and, and discuss it further. Dennis, did you have something?
I do have a, a question to, to my colleagues here. When you, proposing 10 or proposing 4, I sit on, have sat on several boards, and most of them are odd numbers. What do you propose, if there's a tie, where's it go?
Well, we're not passing the policy, we're just moving it on here.
Right.
So even if it went and, quote, tell me if I'm wrong.
I will.
Even if we voted it down 3-0, right? We voted it down 3-0, we don't want it. We still have to pass it on to the board.
Right, but what's the committee do if it's...
Good, good. So motions fail on a tie. So if in the policy committee, a motion is made to recommend the adoption of a policy to the board, and it's 2-2, it comes to the board without a recommendation.
Right, it still goes to the board.
Right.
Gotcha.
We don't shoot it down.
Yeah, our, Dennis, our policy says that policy committee reviews and recommends to the full board.
Well, that's the current...
But in general, I was just saying, philosophically, most boards have an odd number, so you can have a decision.
Well, the Board of Finance doesn't, they have six, and they've never had a problem with a decision.
Right, well, even, even, even if you have a Board of Finance, right?
Yeah.
And it's tied 3-3, the deciding factor goes to the selectman.
Right.
Right?
True.
So, you know, in this case, that's why I was just trying to find processes, and what you're saying is if it's a tie, decision's going to come to the board anyway.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted, so on the Board of Finance, the selectman only breaks the tie in the election for chair. If the Board of Finance ties 3-3 or 2-2, because four is a quorum, then the motion fails. In, in general, the motion fails on a tie, because you need a majority to pass something. So you could still...
Say it's a tie.
Yeah. And I just...
So conceptually, you'd be the same there?
Yes, exactly. Also, I understand that, you know, meeting in person is, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort, so if the policy committee wants to meet more often, because we still have the executive order, I think you could also Zoom. I mean, I don't know if that's...
As long as it's posted, right?
Yeah, as long as it's posted in that manner. I, I know that, you know, we said we're going to meet as a full board, if school's in session, we should be here, I completely agree with that. But perhaps committees could, could Zoom just for committees, and we still meet here as a full board, you know? I know, at least being in my home at a meeting, it helps a little bit, so I don't know if that could help.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Go ahead.
Excuse me, another process question. In the past, on your policy committee, was the public invited to your public, to your policy committee meetings? So that kind of makes it a little difficult with Zoom, right?
Well, you could...
They would get sent the link in the agenda.
You could still give the, actually, you could still give the policy committee members the link and just post the live stream, so that any member of the public can view it. Whatever the, whatever the, and when we had meetings on Zoom before, the public was actually invited and just muted, but anyhow.
I don't think it does. That's a question I would have, I don't think it...
You mean, that's a public meeting?
Yeah, I don't, I know it has to be posted.
Yeah.
But it's still on the board.
Yeah, so the public work.
Yeah.
It might work, but I don't think it has to be like, like even like Board of Finance and Town Council, you know, well, those are in-person, I don't think.
In-person for that reason, because the public needs to be there, right? It has to be able to be there.
Right.
So that's why I'm raising, if you're raising a thing, we need more public participation, then...
Well, yeah, but I think you misconstrued when I said to take out the at least. Yes, I would love another board member. I was looking for students and parents and teachers, like Trumble has. I, I took the at least, I don't like that at least, because it's three of us. I want more. I'd like the teacher rep, I'd like an MEA rep, I'd like an administrative rep, I'd like parents and students. I'd like people to come in and tell me why I have a policy in front of me that might not work or is awesome. I'd like to hear it from them, instead of the three of us trying to figure it out all the time. That's why I was wanting the at least out, I mean, I want the at least in, and that's why I was upset they took it out.
And I agree about Zoom, by the way. I mean, we have to follow whatever the, there are still boards meeting on Zoom, but we have to definitely follow, I think there's still a way to do it, but I know we haven't done it in a while, so we would just have to, you know, refresh how the public can meet, because as Shannon, you know, every, every meeting of the board, whether it be a committee or not, is a public meeting.
And Jerry, I wonder again, because I wasn't at those meetings, but as far as the at least, could they have been talking about the people that actually vote, which are the board members?
Oh, George was, we, we had our discussion. I understood where he was coming from, and I think he understood where I was coming from. We were talking apples and oranges at one, one point, he knew that, and I knew that.
Yeah.
You know, I just don't, and plus, like I said, I'd love a fourth board member, I think just that voice, you're talking about some pretty serious stuff, a lot of it's due to CAE, but I got it, they're telling you what you should do and what you shouldn't do, but just to have that other voice, I just thought it would help.
But that's, that's, excuse me, that's the only concern I had. If most things come down from CAE, and they got legal ramifications, expanding your board to a population that doesn't have that access potentially, I mean, I love the idea of input, but having board members who get to vote on board policy, to bring it to this board, makes a lot more sense than just having the general public that doesn't necessarily have legal ramifications from CAE or the other information. I mean, I, I get getting input, the more input this board can get, the better we can be, right? But I don't know whether you could set it in policy to insist on more bodies.
You could, if you called a subcommittee of the policy committee.
Right, so you form a subcommittee.
What Trumble does is they call that committee, the parents, administrators, union reps, a subcommittee of policy.
Right, so they don't have voting rights, but they have input rights, right?
Right, yes, yes.
What I was, hold on, one second, Jeff, what I was driving at is perhaps the thought was voting members versus, I don't see any, any reason why the policy committee couldn't request a subject matter expert, a parent, a teacher to come in and quote-unquote testify...
Oh, agree, agree.
You know, at any point in time to get, right, your students or anything like that.
No, there was, right.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
I would just add to this point, that there is public participation, no, at the policy committee?
No.
Not anymore. No, no.
Even that being said, that a parent, teacher, resident could come before us here in public participation?
Yes.
I think they have...
Not that they would guarantee the answer from us, but they could raise an issue with the policy, they could not present a policy, but, you know, say, hey, I think you ready this?
Yeah.
You know, can you look at this as a board?
Very true.
Right, I, I think it would be more fruitful, instead of public participation, where somebody's just making a statement, it's not a question and answer, but if, if a teacher, administrator, right, a parent, a student were at the policy committee as an invited guest or subject matter expert, then you can have dialogue and go back and forth with that person, which is a little different than what I think you're doing now.
Thank you, that's, that's all I meant.
Right?
I was just trying to get the right info, you know, we're not all experts, even though we might want to think we all are, we're not. So I wanted to get it from the expert, I wanted to just ask, gee, how will this affect? What am I not seeing, or what am I seeing? That's right. You know, it's just, it's, it's hard, once it's written in policy, that's what it is, that's what the administrative uses and the students use to look up what they did right or wrong, it's part of policy.
Right, and, and to play devil's advocate with the at least three, or two, or five, whatever you want to say, is if we leave the policy that the policy committee comes back and makes a recommendation, nothing dies in, in that committee.
Right.
So everything comes back to us, so...
It does.
To play devil's advocate, does it really matter what those numbers are?
I agree.
You know?
I, and I said the same thing, by keeping it, it wouldn't matter.
I think it does, if I'm hearing things correctly, right? If you were to make 10, right? You want consistency in the 10 meeting, so they know what you're discussing, so you're not just perpetuating motions and, and discussions, right? That's why I think you need to have a finite number of people to vote on policy committee. You can have adjunct, supplemental, whatever you need to help educate you, but you need to have that tight, so you can make a vote and push it, if not, your, your fear of things not getting pushed down the road is just going to get exacerbated, right? Because you're just going to have too much input of different people with no endpoint of decisions of moving it up to this board. It's my concern.
Well, it would have to come up for, for a vote, whether to move it to the board...
Right, but if you're going to discuss it in policy with 10 different people each